Thank you. I now, Anthony, I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:09 PM. Will take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon, Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Mr. Scirvano.
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Escobedo.
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to, at this time, thank Rod Waddell and Alan Leon for who are working behind the scenes to make sure our broadcast is done and did a great job on Comcast Channel 20, which we're sure thousands and thousands of people are watching tonight, so probably not. But we do not have, okay. We will now, at this time, recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. will present.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Board members. We are here to recognize, this evening, our spring state-level competitors. Up first, IESA Bowling. Flynn Middle School Boys and Girls Bowling Teams both found success in the regular season. Both teams qualified at sectionals to compete at the IESA State Bowling Tournament in Joliet in April. The girls' team finished sixth at the state tournament. Congratulations to teammates Ashley Harkey, Fallon Perry, LeAnn Severson, and Haley Weeks.
All right.
The boys' team includes Eli Bowers, Logan Dove, Casey Peters, and Carver Villarreal. Way to go, Flynn Falcons. Somebody say "close."
Right. Any three hundreds in there? No. I bet there was some two hundreds, maybe, though.
She's got the sweatshirt on.
Great job. Wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you. Great job.
Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
That's right.
Up next, IESA Boys Track and Field. Auburn High School's Cyrell Holland was the only RPS 205 student to compete at the IESA Boys Track and Field Tournament last month. Holland, a junior, qualified to compete in the 100-meter dash. Congratulations, Cyrell Holland. He is not here with us this evening, but his coach, Mr. Kevin Anderson, is here to accept on his behalf.
All right.
All right. Now, that's dedication.
That's right. Congratulations.
Thanks for being here.
It's great to run.
Congratulations, Coach.
And last, but certainly not least, IESA Boys Tennis. One of our regular superstars, Auburn High School junior Quentin Nevenhoven, finished with the IESA Class II A State Tennis Tournament with a 3-2 record. He won his first two matches on Friday, but lost Saturday to the player who would eventually win the state title. Nevenhoven went on to win the first match in the consolation bracket and lost in the second. Congratulations on another outstanding season, Mr. Quentin Nevenhoven. Come on up.
All right.
No worries.
It happens all the time.
He's got that strong forehand right there.
Great job. Great job. Very proud of you.
Please, let's also, if you would please join me, in thanking our parents and coaches. Please, congratulations. Teachers and principals, I see some of those who are here.
All right.
Thank you, sir. That is all.
Great. We have no public speakers for tonight, so I will ask if there are any board member comments at this time. Mr. Siegel.
Since this is the first meeting since graduations, I did want to take the opportunity to thank the Auburn graduates and their guests for their patience with some technical difficulties. It was a pretty unusual circumstance, but, yeah, they were very gracious during the ceremony and afterwards, too. So, thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
All right. It's good. It's good. Yeah, and I would just like to thank not only our board members for giving up a Saturday, but the administrative cabinet and their team and all the work that you put together to make our day on Saturday a fruitful one, and it's greatly appreciated. So, thanks for being there. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items: the meeting minutes from February, um, from February, from May 22nd, 2018; payroll accounts payable; purchase orders; construction bid request logs; contracts under $10,000; and travel; the following bid recommendations for East High School's security cameras; the Guilford Pole Barn; the interior painting at Auburn and Guilford High Schools; pest control services; and the elevator lift chair inspections and maintenance; the recurring contract with therapy care for a speech and language pathologist; and the Rock Valley College Running Start Program; and the other consent items, including the property casualty and student accident program liability insurance; the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding for the Multi-Classroom Leader Model; the RBMA contract; and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins.
8B, C, and D.
Mr. Siegel.
8A and 9B.
Okay. Mr. Escobedo.
7A.
Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second for the approval of item 7A, which is the meeting minutes of May 22nd, 2018.
So moved.
By Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Coordinator call the roll on the approval of the meeting minutes for May 22nd.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Abstain.
Mr. Dixon?
Abstain.
The motion passes with five yeses, two abstains.
I'm going to take these individually, then, because I think they're all different issues. So, I'll take a motion and a second to approve the East High School's security cameras, which is item bid recommendation 8A.
So moved.
By Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion?
This is, actually, you could have taken them together, because they're all procurement questions rather than substantive questions. So, 8B and 8C, we only had one bid, and I never like to see that. I'm just going to say that. I never like to see that, because we're not getting competition then. So, do we have any explanation for why we only have one bid? Is there something we could be doing differently in the future to try to get more bids? You know, the Guilford Pole Barn is really kind of puzzling, because that's just general construction. The interior painting, I know I've heard in the past that we do have issues finding painters to submit bids, but, you know, is there anything we can be doing differently to break those up? Should we have done it by separate schools?
As far as the painting, we did hold a second pre-bid because of the poor turnout of the first one, and there was a similar result to the second one, although we did get a second bidder.
Uh, could, could, is the mic turned on?
It is. Am I not close enough, too?
Yeah. Okay.
Do I need to repeat that part?
Sure.
The painting, we held a second pre-bid because of the poor attendance of the first one to try to drum more interest. We did call, and it turns out the project is a lot, it's large for painters, but small for general contractors, because all those jobs, we send to general contractors as well. So, we did try to drum up more interest in that one, and we could not. The Pole Barn, I'll be honest, that was a little bit ago, and we tabled that for some time, so I wasn't sure if that was going to go forward or not, so I'd have to look into the specifics on that one. As far as generating more bidders, that's always an ongoing process. As far as, you know, adding people that are new to the process or have approaches for the first time, going out and actively trying to find people to send bids to, so that we know that they're receiving them, as opposed to just sending them out via advertising. I'm not particularly a fan of awarding with one either, but sometimes it's the only option you have with the time constraints that we're given, so.
And as long as you're up there, I'll just answer the question.
Sure.
On the, on the other one, the 8D, the only, my only question there is that the low bid came into the penny what our budget is. Do we publish our budget? Is that?
No, we don't share our budget during the bid process. People ask, and we tell them no.
Just a coincidence?
It's just a coincidence?
Yeah.
Okay.
Might have been good estimating. I don't know. Budgets are done at the department level.
Mr. Siegel?
In a different direction, the security cameras at East. I've been asked a few times over the last couple of months, what are things the school district is doing to address security concerns that happen to be bubbling up across the country? And this is something that I think can be a nice thing to point to and say, you know, we are aware of the need for excellent security, and the cameras is a real, an excellent and fairly low-impact way to add security to the building, so I was just pleased to see that.
Any other comments? So, we do have a motion on the floor just for item 8A. Would, you know, you'd like to amend that motion to include 8A through 8D?
So moved.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have to do a roll on that? No? Okay. All right, so we now have a, we now have an approval of the amended motion, so we'll now vote on that motion and call the roll on the approval of items, the bid recommendations, 8A through 8D.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes. The motion passes unanimously as amended.
All right, I'll take a motion and a second to approve item 9B, which is the recurring contract for Rock Valley College Running Start Program.
So moved.
Mr. Connor has moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion?
Just another great op, I'm sorry. Make sure you recognize.
Mr. Siegel.
Sorry. Just another great opportunity that exists within 205 for students to take advantage of extra educational opportunities. This is a chance for students to earn their last two years of high school credits while they're earning an associate's degree through Rock Valley College. This is a tremendous educational and financial opportunity for a number of families in the district, and just think, it's an amazing opportunity.
Mrs. McCulloch.
And I apologize, I didn't send a note asking for this information, but when we have a recurring contract like this, that does have a fiscal impact. Kind of like to have a little bit more information about, you know, what is our trend? What has it been like the past couple of years? How many students have started it? How many have completed it? I mean, is it really, I mean, it is a great opportunity, but are we, what's our return on our investment? And, again, what, what is, how are the students doing with it? I mean, we're going to offer it to 40, right? I mean, is that what we offered before, and, or, and, and did all of them finish the two, two years? Or did, you know, that kind of information could be helpful.
Before I turn it over to either Mrs. French or Mrs. Detman to discuss the details of this particular offering, this is something we talked about at the board retreat that, and I think this is a classic example of what we were talking about. We're going to commit to 80% accuracy for year one on all of these recurring contracts running back through a PDSA process and creating a supportive slide deck that will allow the board to have that documenting, that doc, the documentation that you're seeking. We, we do ask for this, for June and July as a period for us to build the document, build the, the background information necessary. So, we're going to have to do a few of them in the old way here, through June and July, but you can anticipate, starting in August, that things will not make it through cabinet, at least at an 80% rate, if I'm going to hit my target, without being washed back through a process that puts the impetus on the leader of that particular contract if I'm gonna hit my target, without being washed back through a process that puts the impetus on the, the leader of that particular contract to answer those types of questions. I do think we are in a position where, uh, either Mrs. Detman or Mrs. French could answer that question, so I'm gonna turn it over to them, but I did want-
So, we won't have to conclude this in your 20%, then?
I'm off the hook from this one.
Okay, alright.
So, the rate of return is great. Um, all students who have started the program have completed with both their high school diploma and their associate's degree. And we've had 40 students per year go through the program, and that's what the contract will continue as. Forty students will start as juniors, complete as seniors with their associates and their diploma.
Has the, um, cost to the district changed at all?
Um, some of their tuition and fees have increased slightly, but we do have a cap on that amount, so that our financial impact is known, is a known variable, regardless of any changes in tuition and fees, that the college incurs.
As a historical reference, when this first came before the board about seven years ago, we followed the original Belvedere model, which charged significantly above the tuition rate with the idea that there were additional counseling services provided. So, while Rock Valley has seen their tuition rate increase, uh, over the last two or three cycles due to some cuts in state funding and some need for revenue, it's still significantly below what we were charged when the program debuted seven years ago.
That was gonna be my next question. Where are we at with the counseling? Because that was an issue. Are we counseling our own students, or?
We are counseling our own students, so that's part of the, one of the appendixes that is in the contract is that we have really explicitly identified the role of the Director of Antiasus and her oversight of the high school counselors and their role in helping students ensure that they're successful in the program and that they're meeting their high school graduation requirements while they're taking their Rock Valley College courses.
So, if we only take 20 students a year, are there students who apply and are, um?
There are students. Um,
What kind of numbers?
We have in the past run a lottery, um, and we are in conversations with, um, ed services and the counseling department about potentially changing that to an interview process with a rubric, much like what Rockford Promise does with their scholars, based on grades and, and merit and an interview rather than a lottery.
So, when you had the lottery this last year, for example, what kind of numbers did you have that you chose?
We, we had 62 students who qualified and 40 students were chosen, so 22 students were, were not, um, accepted or enrolled into the program. However, four students declined their seat, so in total, that would be 58 students, um, you know, total, and then 18 really didn't get in, if that makes sense. So, so students were offered and then declined their spot.
And my last question probably should be a no-brainer, but, I mean, do all districts, because there are other districts who do this, have the same, um, fiscal impact on a per student, or does everybody have their own contract with different? I mean, ours is obviously different if we're not doing counseling.
It all came, they, they all filed suit once we did it.
Okay, so everybody's on the same plane to deal with that?
Yes.
Thank you, France.
You're welcome.
Is there any talk of, um, increase? Because it is such a wonderful program. Um, being a father that's, that has a daughter in the program, it's, it's, it's time-consuming, but, but it's the value that we get from it is worth it. So, is there opportunity for increase? Are there talks about increasing the number?
I think we'll, we'll continue to monitor the numbers and see if they continue to grow. I think this is a great opportunity for our students, but we also like the opportunities that are available to our students on our high school campuses, and that is not something that students who are enrolled in Running Start have an opportunity to participate as far as our academy, academies go. So, we want opportunities for all students, and this is just one component of those. So, if we see the interest continue to grow, certainly that will be a discussion. But at this time, as far as, you know, fiscal restraints go, we're, we're limiting it to 40 for the next two years.
And just to give some additional context, um, the reason we made that decision with a lot of consultation with the board at the time when we set those initial caps was what Mr. Rollins consistently refers to as an opportunity cost. There's a level of offering here where if this program, uh, grew without any limits, the, the upside would be every student who wanted to be in the program would have that opportunity, which we certainly would see value in. The board at the time and the administration at the time felt like setting limits was important, because you do run the risk the, of an overly expansive program, limiting advanced placement and other local offerings on your campus. So, we are really delicately trying, Mr. Dixon, to balance those two interests, where enough of the students have this opportunity, those unique children that really are okay with not having a traditional high school experience, without having it be such a major, uh, student participation level that the students who do not want that experience lose those experiences in their high school by virtue of the class as not being able to be offered, if that makes sense. So, that's the, the juggling that Mrs. French and her team do on an annual basis, as we consider making an amendment to the, the caps.
Any other discussion? Mr. Escobedo?
So, yeah, this just came to mind as a discussion was, um, happening here with adding more opportunities, but this is just a, a common thought, no need to respond. But what if you were to, um, to, let's say, double the, the number of students that could participate, but lessen the dual credit, so that you still somehow kept the same, spent the same amount, but would give the opportunity to more students, even if they came out with, let's say, one year's worth of, um, college credits? But therefore, maybe that, if that brings to, say, 80% of 80 students, maybe that gets most of the students within our district that would be interested in getting credit, and that would, just a thought.
Mr. Rollins?
So, so here's my observation, and, and so I'll be sort of the counter here. In order to offer a course in this district, we require a minimum number of students to sign up for that course. And I don't know the number off the top of my head. I thought it was 15, could be wrong. Let's, let's just use 15. 20? Okay. So, if we require at least 20 students to sign up for a course, a lot of these higher-level courses, um, they barely sometimes run. And if we start shipping kids off to Rock Valley College, because, say, there's 24 kids who might be interested in a course in one of our high schools, and five of them decide to go to Rock Valley College, now there's 19 kids who wanted to stay with us who can't take that course. Or, um, and by the way, you know, I can remember my oldest daughter trolling her high school senior class looking for kids who wanted to take Calc II. I mean, this, this is, this is a real problem, you know, for the upper-level courses. There's also an efficiency issue here, so it costs us the same, the teacher costs us the same to teach 25 kids or 20. If we pay Rock Valley College to teach five of them and run the course with 20, it's costing us actually more to educate those 25 kids. So, it, it is an interesting program. Um, there are some benefits to the individuals involved, but from a district standpoint, there's an opportunity cost for kids, not just us, but for kids, and there's an efficiency cost to us as well. So, we, we do have to keep those, those issues in mind.
Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of nine B, the Rock Valley College Running Start Program.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on now to the closed session consent agenda items, including the following appointments. Patty Strel as a 10-month elementary assistant principal, who will be placed at Washington. The appointment of Candace Cacciatore as a 10-month assistant principal K5, who will be placed at Gregory Elementary School. The appointment of Mish Shah as a 10-month assistant principal, who will be assigned to Guilford High School. The appointment of Stephanie Heidel as a 10-month assistant principal, who will be assigned to Auburn High School. The appointment of Dr. Jennifer Lack Kilman as an 11-month early childhood principal, assigned to Somerdale. The resolution for dismissal of Director of Building and Grounds, Mr. Kaplanis. The resolution authorizing notice of remedy for Nicole Kozensky. The HR organizational report and addendum, and the appointment of Amy Croxford as assistant principal K5 to be assigned to Cherry Valley Elementary. And the following closed session consent items for student discipline, unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Students 4197 and 4201 are expelled for the entire 2018-19 school year. Student 4200 is expelled for the entire 2018-19 school year and the entire 2019-20 school year. Expulsions for students 2036, 4199, and 4202 are held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement through the entire 2018-19 school year. Uh, four one, student 4198 has, was pulled by administration. The following EIA's were approved. Students 1022, 1023, 1025, student 3570, 3571, 3572. Student 3573 was pulled. Uh, three, students 3574, 3575, 3576, 3577, 3578, 3580, 3581, 3582, student 3583, 3584, and 3585. Is there a motion and a second to approve these closed session consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration?
Uh, 11F.
Any others? Not that now the coordinator, um, called the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second for the closed session consent item 11F, which was the resolution for dismissal of Director of Building and Grounds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Segal?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion, no discussion, that's right. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 11F.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Abstain.
The motion passes with six yeses, one abstain.
Thank you. We'll move on in our agenda to superintendent's report, Dr. Chair.
I want to reiterate my appreciation for the board and the management team for coming in on Saturday morning. We had, uh, what I think is always a really important conversation. I do have two requested follow-ups from that meeting, uh, so that I can move forward with a recommendation for the new fiscal year. I'm gonna be having individual meetings with the vast majority of the board members between now and our next meeting, so we can talk about it there. But also, feel free to call me or email me, but I would love to have any suggestions on what the calendar should look like. We have a suggested report schedule. Please review the document that was provided. And, um, we, we have a, a suggested list of 34 reports based on feedback from board members. We know there may be some imperfection or, uh, or things that board members would prefer to see arranged differently, or if there's things you want added. Our goal is to try to limit it to 34 reports, so there's one per, uh, meeting with the idea that we would fully vet all of those reports at our cabinet meetings prior to coming forward, and that they would be very comprehensive in nature. So, if you have other suggestions, other ideas, uh, we can discuss them, or please send them to me, and we will, uh, work to come up with a refined calendar at the 26th, at our next meeting. In addition, uh, we understand, as we reflect in the meeting, uh, there was a lot of preparation that went into the meeting, but it was perhaps too sit-and-get oriented, um, with the exception of a few activities that we provided. There was a lot of, we had so much to get through that there wasn't enough opportunity to hear board voice. So, I would really encourage you, um, to review, uh, the goals that were presented and, uh, the targets that were set for next year. We've received specific feedback, specifically on the school scorecard as well and, and our timeline. But if you have, um, suggestions on areas that are missing or refinements, I would also love to hear from you in those areas as well. So, we hope to refine, uh, that work and, uh, and finalize it as we go into, uh, the June 26th board meeting and certainly into the July board meeting, so that we can start with that new schedule, uh, in the new school year and as quickly as possible, um, set our targets for the, the next school year as well.
We'll move on then to committee reports, which might be the last time I'm asking for these. Uh, Mrs. McCulloch, education.
So, Education Committee has not met since our previous board meeting and will not be meeting again, at least for the foreseeable future. We have canceled the June, uh, June meeting. We had one item on the agenda, and we really, um, it was smart sharing, and we really like the whole board to be, um, involved in hearing that report when it comes to us. So, um, as my last opportunity, um, to thank my community members, who have been just outstanding this year, Mrs. Christina Peacock, Marticia Brown, Dr. Joan Cole, and Ricardo Montoya Picasso, all, um, were just really valuable, valued members who took a lot of time, because those meetings were never short enough, um, and asked intelligent questions and really helped us, um, you know, work through the nitty-gritty of a lot of pieces. So, um, there will not be a meeting this month, and the committee of the whole, is my understanding, will begin next month, July 17th, which was, um, the third Tuesday of the month, which was typically ed committee, so my schedule's not changing. But, um, again, thank you to everyone involved, and also thank you to the administrative, um, um, help that we had. Mr. Bosberg and Mrs. Detman both stepped up and, and got us through the year.
Mr. Rollins, the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee also has not met and will not be meeting again as we're converting to the Committee of the Whole.
Mr. Connor, Operations.
Operations actually met in this room last Tuesday at 6:30. Our only and main item was, uh, or our only scheduled item was the custodial staff overview, and the progress with Airmark. And I think the one comment that we received was that really congratulations to the administration for the organization of the survey, the communication behind it, the regularity with which, um, there was regular feedback, and really focusing on our issues and actively seeing what we need to do on that, got good remarks from all members of the committee. So, was very encouraged by that. Mrs. Ellis got kudos all the way around for doing a good job for that. So, I think I'd be happy to report that even though there was a concern ongoing that the improvements, uh, really need to take hold in the communication process, but it seemed to be very encouraging. So, that was the, the note that we spent most of the time. The other thing was, if I might, uh, you know, similar to Mrs. McCulloch, say thank you to Brian Nussis, Glenn Turpoff, Gene Harris-Lack, Chip Block, and Sunny O'Purrie, who all came very prepared to every meeting, had excellent comments, and really, I think, provided a very valuable community service. And the one thing that we did talk about as sort of our final topic was the fact that there's no structural way, right now, for community members to be a part of the committee, uh, Committee of the Whole. And so, the one suggestion I do have for the board members is for us to seriously think about, and for the administration to think about, what are some legitimate means that we could have for ongoing involvement with the community? And one suggestion that might make sense, and I think maybe I heard something about this, was that we pick special topics, and I'm making this up, I'm not suggesting this as a topic, but say, around early childhood, or the academy program, or a particular part of the budget, or whatever it is, that we have some involvement on some of these subject areas as almost like a special, uh, in fact-finding research and have community a part of it. I'm not saying that's necessarily the right idea, but, um, at least what I'd like to suggest, because I've gotten a fair amount of feedback, is how do we continue to engage the community with us, even though the community, the whole structure itself doesn't really provide for it, so. And with, really, with some regret, I have to say that we likewise will not have a next meeting that's scheduled.
Thank you. We'll move on then to our action item for tonight, which is in new business, but administration is requesting this board suspend the rules to consider the approval of the consultant agreement with Mark Adamani for murals for new schools to ensure they are completed by the school's grand opening. So I would ask at this time, is there a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the board to consider the consultant agreement with Mark Adamani for murals for new schools?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Segal? This is on the motion to suspend the rules. Okay, all right. You have questions on the other, right. All right. So have you called the, have you called the roll then on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. Dixon?
Never mind.
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
No.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
No.
The motion failed by, it's not a supermajority, supermajority, by four yeses and three nos.
Okay. So can we have the first reading on this, this subject? Who's going to do that? Will that be you, Mrs. Oldie? Okay. Okay. You've got to put a quarter in this slide.
So when the board approved the Constance Lane School, you had asked to have a memorial of sorts to address her and also to ensure that we put in place somehow that individuals would have information about who Constance Lane was and her importance as to why the school was named after her. We felt like parody would be important for the Cherry Valley School, as well as the Leonard B. Keller Memorial that is going for the gym. So we did look into various options, and the main option that we saw was Mr. Adamani, who is an art, a local artist who paints murals, and he would be able to put a nice compilation of, for the Cherry Valley mural where it would incorporate the Cherry Valley School, A.C. Thompson, who was the individual, he was the one of Nebako County Supervisor for whom the Thompson School was named after, as well as White Swan, which, by the way, was named after a location. So I'm learning a lot about the history of Rockford Schools. So he was going to put together a mural incorporating a lot of the different themes for the Cherry Valley School, and in particular have it ready for the opening. For Constance Lane, we've gathered a lot of the information about her. She was the first African-American teacher in the school district. She was hired by the Superintendent McIntosh, after whom McIntosh School is named. She had graduated from West Virginia College, it's now a university, and so we have a lot of that information that Mr. Adamani would be incorporating into a mural. And we felt like that would be a great honor for all of the individuals and the entities involved. And that's the reason why we had asked for you guys to approve the particular contract. The contract is listed for two murals. I understand there might be some concern if administration had asked for additional work on those murals, because there is an hourly charge on that, but we are holding a pretty tight rein on that. That would, and I think that's typical when you do a piece of work. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Segal?
How did you end up selecting this particular consultant?
Mary, is she here? She knew the artist, and so she brought him to us. We reviewed his artwork, and that's how we ended up finding this muralist. We had wanted a mural, when we were looking at the different options, to incorporate a lot of the honor we wanted to give to both the entities as well as the individuals. So we felt like this would be a great way to incorporate a lot of that.
I'll just add to that, and I did explain this to Mr. Segal, that this gentleman is a graduate of Rockford Public Schools, I think he was, was in East High grad, and he was recognized at the Fine Arts Banquet that the district held as one of the winners to be recognized. So he does have some history with our school district, so.
And I will say, although I learned this after the fact, and it had nothing to do with the selection, he also happens to be a neighbor of Ms. Yar.
Okay. That sells it for me. Actually have a couple of contractual questions. The language in the contract says that the 19,000?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred, whatever, is based on the minimum estimated cost? And then all extra work would be billed at a rate of 60 bucks per hour? Is there a maximum the district will pay for this?
The extra is only if we ask for something extra on it, which we don't intend to do. But there, that is baked in for basically, it's typical for consultants, so you set your rate, but there's, if you ask them to do anything extra, they have their hourly rate.
Um.
So this includes the canvas, it includes the actual work, and he is going to give a drawing of the work, so a draft of what he's going to be doing.
And I realize he's going to be there to kind of guide the installation, but will need to be responsible for delivering and installing this?
That would be correct.
Will there be any special lighting requirements for it? Looking at his gallery of murals, I notice that they're all pretty specifically lit?
We did meet the artist at Cherry Valley School to review some of the proposed placement areas, and then also then the dimensions for the, for the artwork. It won't require any additional lighting. The areas in the atrium area, which is very well lit, great location, it's going to be above, so we won't get handprints on the mural or anything.
Oh, that's good, because it, as community members have brought up to me in the past, when we have kind of reached the end life of a mural, we've typically just painted over them. I realize this is going to be on canvas and is going to be removable.
That's why we did that.
But what's the plan for the mural when we've reached its, its end of, end of life? Which inevitably, we will.
When this, you mean when the school goes? Yes, and that's why we did it specifically on canvas, so it could be removed in addition to if there was going to be any modifications to the building, which would result in either destruction or, or removal of the, of the painting itself. So that's why we, we chose specifically to have it on, rather than paint it on the wall, we chose to have it on canvas.
And not to micromanage this, but what was the, I guess, his source for content inspiration? And was there stuff collected?
Yes. Yes, we had to collect all the information. I did send Chris Uus to the local library, who was very helpful in gathering information about the buildings and the individuals. I know Mary went to, went to the Rockford Register Star, where she was able to obtain different photographs as well. We found a lot of the historical documents on the school's origins, and so we gathered that information. Mr. Connor was quite helpful in reaching out to some of his sources also to provide some content.
And I guess I'm really happy to know that Mr. Adamani is a product of 205. I think that gives us an opportunity to highlight the talent in our area. But as a purveyor of artistic instruction and creation ourselves, it would have been kind of interesting, I think, for us to have been able to showcase our current talent and have maybe the students and teachers create this. Because I'm very, very confident that there is the talent and the capacity to do, to do this with our own, our own students. Now, I know Mr. Adamani's a professional, and completely respect that, and, you know, art is unique, and therefore it can fetch whatever price a client's willing to pay, and I completely get all that. But this is kind of an opportunity for the school communities to really get involved in something fairly spectacular, somewhat like Marshall Middle School did with that big aquatic scene, the yellow submarine scene in the entrance of the school, which I think turned out pretty cool. I don't know, it just seemed like this was a good opportunity for our current students.
Mr. Escobedo?
I think I was, unless two sentences there, I think is exactly what I was going to say. I was thinking of Ms. French about this project. You know, what if you could get the high school academies to do a competition to see who could come up with the best projects, and involve our arts department, our engineering teams, do the lighting, our construction teams do the frames and whatnot, and make it a academy competition sort of thing? I just echoed the part about making it something that our students would do and be more representative. It would just be, add much more value.
Okay. Mr. Dixon?
I echo everything my board member said. I guess my concern was the bidding. I felt like the price, we could have, went anywhere, but we only got one bid, one that job brought to us. I would like to have different types of bid and different, and actually seeing their artwork. So that was my concern, and that's why I said no.
Okay. Mrs. McCulloch?
Well, and we said no to the timing on it, and that was so we could have this conversation. But also, in my perspective, not having it completed for the opening at Cherry Valley in the fall, just because we won't be opening Constance Lane School this fall. I mean, you can put a big, you know, to come, sort of note up there.
Coming attraction.
Coming attraction, or whatever, for whatever direction you, you go, or if we continue to go with Mr. Adamani. He does do lovely work. We have other artists in the area, and they might have had other conception, conceptually other ideas, but I, you know, I've seen their students' work. I mean, we've got murals, yeah. So I think that your suggestions are well taken. I, that wasn't even on my initial radar. So wherever, wherever it goes, I just kind of explain.
Okay. We will vote on this at our next board meeting on June 26th. Our next item is the special education private and residential placement contract. Anybody have a presentation on that? Come on up. Want to introduce yourself to the group? Doesn't sound like it's on.
There you go, I can.
There we go, okay.
There was a button, and it was not pushed. So, yeah, the private residential placement contract for thresholds. So kind of the, the big picture is that special, special education teams, there are certain decisions that may be made for students regarding placement. There are some students who may require residential placement at times, and this kind of goes into making sure that we have spaces available for those students who may require that type of placement. And this is one of those locations. And. I will try.
Oops.
So.
This is in Chicago, right? Is that correct?
Um, I believe that is correct. Let me pull that up.
Dan, could, could you maybe just speak to the need for this contract at this point in time? You know, how many students are we looking to serve with this contract, and, you know, why at this point in time in the year?
Yeah. Can I, is there any way I can pause on this? Hi. So let me pull that up again. I'm sorry, that's what I was looking at for right now. Let me get that for you guys.
Dan, while you pull that up, I'm going to do the best I can to summarize.
Thank you.
Okay? And what I, what I can see is that it's our responsibility to provide therapeutic day placements when we don't have a placement appropriate for the student within our district. We exceeded our budget for this fiscal year, and yet we have a student who requires services. And so we're over by $16,000, and that this contract would guarantee placement for that student in the best possible situation for his or her individual needs.
That sounds like an accurate statement. I was trying to find more details on this specific case. Sometimes it's an instance of a student that moves into our district that requires a certain type of placement, and that sort of thing. I was trying to find more specifics for why at this point in time, the specific students here, but.
But regardless of the student's individual circumstances, when we decide therapeutic day is the best possible placement, it's our responsibility to provide that, and this contract allows us to do that for the student.
That's correct. We're required to provide that continuum of placements, and there are students, and it's a difficult thing to project at times. Some years there may be more students that require that type of placement than others. Individuals, in special education, we're always looking at individual students, and predicting what individual students will need at any, any certain time of year is always a challenge.
I think if the board has any questions specifically about this topic that we're not able to answer, certainly we'll, we'll take that and ensure that you have communication before our next read to get those questions answered.
What was the location?
The location?
It's in Chicago. I looked it up. It's Kimball Avenue on Chicago. Mrs. McCulloch, you had a question?
I do. So this is one of the big picture pieces that I, I think it's good for us to see. I know it's embedded in our whole budget, but as you bring forward a piece like this to see the, because it's in addition to the others, but the fact that we spent, what, $6,500,000 on therapeutic placements, and I know it's hard to get a number because of what we get reimbursed from the state and what we might get from any other special ed sources and the like, but what kind of reimbursement we get for those placements, and, and I'm not talking about an individual facility. I'm talking about because we have all these hundred, whatever, however many facilities that we have. You know, the different costs. We don't choose a facility based on cost. It's chosen because it meets the needs of our students. But to really get perspective on what a large part of our, our budget is spent, making sure that we have placements for students, I think we take a hit a lot of times, you know, from, from people thinking that we aren't doing as much as we possibly can for our students, and, and so I, it's important to, to show the extent that we're going.
And I, I really appreciate our upcoming opportunities where we'll focus on that return on investment, and can really paint that consistent, clear context.
Well, this isn't kind of a plan, study, do, act thing, because we really don't have that choice, but we can.
Still providing that, that context.
That context would be, I think, helpful, and, and it makes us.
makes us feel knowledgeable.
Sure.
What we're voting on.
Well, and I would add that the, the cost of therapeutic day is, is an expensive thing. It's, we don't have a choice, we have to do it. But, but it does contribute to the average cost per student that we, that we are judged by in the community sometimes. So, Mr. Rollins?
I just wanted to actually ask about something that was in the executive summary, which is that we didn't spend 6.5 million last year. That was our budget. We spent 7.3 million. We went over our budget by $823,000. Understanding that it's hard to predict these things, although that's a pretty big swing. Is that something, is that a trend that we see continuing? Did we budget, I guess this is a question for our CFO, did we budget in the budget that will next be approved for a similar increase for next year? Have we accounted for, if this is a trend, have we accounted for that?
So, I can.
Go ahead.
I was just going to share, I guess, a couple pieces. For context, I went ahead and pulled information from the state, and this is from last year, but we're actually a little below the state average for students in a separate facility. We're at 4.3% of our students. The state, the state is 6.4%. Part of that, my, my theory would be that because we are a larger district, we are better able to support students. Anyway, we have a kind of a greater continuum of supports we can provide as a larger district, which I think is one of the reasons we're able to keep more students here. So, we are below kind of the state average. And I guess I can speak to one thing that we're doing to work on that, which is we do have a team that is dedicated for therapeutic day and those considerations. And so, we're working with them to try to ensure that we're able to continually look at when students may be ready to transition back into Rockford Public Schools, because a student may need that level of support at one point in time does not mean that they will always need that level of support. So, we're trying to help those teams get more information about students so that they're better able to make those determinations. And there may be students who will always require that level of support, but there may be students that can, that can return to us if the therapeutic, and ideally, we would like to see our students that are in these facilities return to us, and that they would get the skills they need in that more, more intense level of support, supported setting to return. So, we're, we're working with those teams to see if we can continually kind of examine whether or not there are opportunities for students to return. So, that, that's work that we're doing to try to improve over time.
Thank you. Thanks for the context, Dan. To answer your question, Mr. Rollins, what we did in the budgeting process this time was really go back three fiscal years and look at our trend. And we saw that we have annually overextended that particular line in the budget. We always have a greater need than what we anticipated. Exactly where we landed for this fiscal year, I can't remember right now, but I'd be happy to provide that information prior to our next exposure to this item.
Ms. McColl?
So, if, if we're at 4.3% in the states, at 7.6%, it would be interesting to know what percentage of an average budget is spent on this. I mean, are we in more expensive places or not? I mean, we're at the, at the mercy of the court for some of them. I understand that. But I don't know if our teams have opportunities to make choices, or they just, you know, what, or what's available. So, that would be part of that bigger context.
Sure.
I think it's awesome. That was really good information. The fact that we are under the state average and part of that is because we're trying to reabsorb. I'd also love to know what percentage you're bringing back. How many students do we send out to therapeutic day school? This isn't going to change the students, but again, that bigger picture, how many of those do we bring back? Because to me, that's a success story for us, that we're able to re, reincorporate them into our regular school system. So, that average cost, the number of students coming back, the, and how we compare to the rest of the state and what we're, our per pupil expenditure on students who are out of district. Because I know we have, we voted on one that went to Nebraska a couple of years ago.
We did.
I don't know if that one's, that person, that individual is still gone, but, you know, we have to go pretty far sometimes.
Yeah, to get the skill level.
And I actually went back and looked. It's, it's 4.3% of students with disabilities in Rockford Public Schools. 6.4% is the state, and this is for SY 2017. And it was 5.6 for what, what, for what SB considers peer districts. So, I'm curious to learn a little bit more. We're also trying to look at what are other districts we can look at that may have some commonalities, because, you know, the state, like I was mentioning, there may be some just, I also want to look at how we're doing against other districts of similar size and similar resources.
Well, and the amount of money we get back is important to know, too, because how did we absorb, you know, $900,000 overage on that, you know? What else lost, or did, is that just, how did that impact the rest of the budget?
Definitely, and we will look into that.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
So, a little homework to do. All right, our next item, Mrs. Mary is going to present on the AP Physics Resource Adoption and the Middle School Social Science Resource Adoption.
Yes, good evening.
Hi.
So, yes, we're bringing two resource adoptions forward tonight from our curriculum teams. The first is for AP Physics. We are looking for, we're asking for you to approve new textbooks for our AP Physics course in our high schools. The total cost of this adoption is $21,567.35. And this total cost includes printed and online materials for teachers and students. And then the second adoption that we're bringing forward tonight is for Middle School Social Science. So, this is for new textbooks for sixth through eighth grade social science classes. The total cost of this resource adoption is $505,785. And this cost includes printed materials, online materials, and professional development. Do you have any questions?
Ms. McColl?
So, one of the last acts of Ed Committee was, we did have a presentation on actually all three of the adoptions, even though the one has been pulled for tonight. And I think we had all the questions asked and answered and vetted and the process spoken to, and the curriculum leadership team people were here, and we moved it forward unanimously from the committee as having had all questions answered. So, I, they did a great job, and I just wanted to share that so that, that you know that, that, that we had an thorough, thorough discussion.
Mr. Dixon?
I have a simple question. Was finance vetted through this as we go through, looking at different books? We know finance so much often gets the backburn of it. Now, did finance have to, did you talk to finance about the purchase, the cost? I know you vetted. I know you did very well.
Well, we talked about the rubric. I think on my Ed Committee report at the last meeting, I spoke to this and that they did have a rubric, and they did look at the amount. And instead of saying, this is the one we want, how much are you going to charge us for it? It was, we're interested in this one, this and this, and these are the costs for each, and this one is, gives us more in this position. And so, they, they did come up.
Thank you. That's what I was.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Yep.
I'm waiting for Mr. Rollins to ask about the return on investment. Okay. I'm sorry. I had to. Any other questions or discussion?
If you want to see all that information, oh, I didn't see if it was attached here, but it is certainly on Ed Committee.
Great.
Their presentation is on there, and their rubrics are listed with the numbers.
Any other questions or discussion? Not this will come up for a vote at our next board meeting. Is there any other agenda items or recommendations for tonight? Mr. Rollins?
So, I understand that the district changed its wellness vendor, which is causing a little bit of disruption for employees. And I was just wondering if somebody could explain the process for doing that, and what communications have been made to employees about the reasoning for that?
Mr. Zedeker?
Yep. It was time, we had an RFP process for our wellness provider. And during that bid process, there is a time, a certain allotted amount of time to be able to present your bid. And Interactive Health was actually late presenting their bid to the district and therefore disqualified themselves as being a potential vendor for our wellness program. During our open enrollment sessions, various emails, and mostly through our 12 different meetings, we explained to all who attended that the Interactive Health would not be our wellness and that we had selected a new vendor that we were working with in terms of usability on the, the front end to make sure that there was a transition for our employees that would be fairly easy, because I know our employees were just getting used to how to enter points and how interactive worked in terms of our wellness. So, that was the main mode of communication for our employees. Also was able to discuss with the principals at a couple of different principal meetings in terms of that change as well to help communicate that with their buildings.
Okay, thanks. So, the, the previous vendor who had the program that we were using before, they failed to submit a timely bid, so we didn't have any choice. We had to move. My only suggestion is, nobody, including me, pays any attention to anything until it actually affects them. So, it's affecting people now. Now is when, you know, now is when they're having some angst, and it might be beneficial to communicate that again. It's exactly what happened, that this in some ways was not, we didn't do this voluntarily. We didn't really have any choice. We just had to move to a different vendor because they failed to submit a timely bid. Thanks.
Any other business or agenda items for not, for tonight? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Dixon. All those in favor say aye. Pull the same sign. We are adjourned at 8:17.